Number two, approval of the minutes from February 21st to February 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or changes?
Jean, tell us all.
Yes.
Wait a second.
Hi Jean.
Hi, how are you?
It's a small group here today.
I did have one question, Tom. I just want to figure out which set of minutes it was. I'm going to need to test our memory here. Selectmen, the charge to the Academy Committee, which is page four of the February 25th minutes. My memory is we did have a discussion about asking them to look at alternate sources of financing. And Lauren, I sort of remember the discussion. I don't know, maybe it was inconclusive as to whether we wanted to put it in the charge.
Yeah, I mean, I made the changes to the charge during like while we were talking that day and I read them back to you.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Well, but they're good anyway.
Well, later in the meeting, I'm going to tell you that's the one thing they can't get to.
Okay, okay.
I just wasn't, I just wasn't sure whether we concluded that it was in the charge or it wasn't in the charge.
This is the final charge that I read aloud to you guys at your last meeting.
That's fine. I'm okay.
Alright, so approval of the minutes is submitted, all in favor?
Aye.
First selectmen's comments, I'll put that off for later. Citizens' comments, hearing none. Number five, discuss to take action to approve moving the public hearings on Monday, March 18th, 2019 to Monday, March 25th, 2019 at 6:45 PM. Purpose of this meeting is to hear comment on the 2018 and 2019 Small Cities Community Development Program applications process for Concomitant Retirement Community.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is going to then take place right before our selectmen's meeting.
Yes.
This is just part of the ongoing process that we have to follow?
Yes, this is part of what the state requires of us in order to submit the application for 2019. And in order for them to release funds for the 2018 application which was submitted, we have to solicit public opinion to make sure that there's no portion of the project that we're missing that the public would like to see. So it's completely a formality and the reason why we're changing it is because at your next meeting, there will be probably 10 things that you also need to approve for the 2019 application. And the consultant would like to only have to come up with a name.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discussion?
I think that was.
Discuss to take actions to call a public hearing on April 1st, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the auditorium of Poulsen Middle School. Purpose of this meeting is to hear comment on the Academy School Community Center Design.
Yep, second.
Lauren, could you just review the dates, upcoming dates for that?
Yes, so the Board of Selectmen have called a public hearing next Thursday, that's 21st of March at 6:30 PM. And you called it at your last meeting, we motioned that your last meeting was to call a public hearing during the week of March 18th pending the availability of Poulsen. So I went back to Poulsen, got the date of the 21st and that's when it will be. And now, we also put this April 1st on the calendar, which is what you're approving today.
What we just said, yeah.
And that is a Monday. And the reason why we did two was just so that we had the month of luck, because of how we need to call public hearings, we can't really call them at the meeting prior to when we want to hold them because of the constraints we're in with public notice being 10 days in the newspaper. We wanted to get you guys another public hearing for April on the books now. The Academy ad hoc committee is aware of both of these dates, they plan on being at both of these dates and I believe they plan on presenting to you on April 1st at this meeting.
They're supportive of the dates?
Yes, yes. Yep, I had spoken with the chair last week before I got April 1st, we were between the first and the second, I had spoken ahead before, solidified the first.
Interesting that we picked April 1st.
Yeah.
Alrighty then.
Can we believe anything?
No.
Okay, any other discussion?
All good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discuss to take action to approve the promotional appointment of Christina Consiglio to the vacant position of Assistant Tax Collector effective 3/11/19. Grade eight, step 11, position is budgeted and funded and the vacancy was created by an internal promotion.
I see grade eight, step four.
Is that different? What did I say?
You said step 11.
I did?
Yep.
We don't have step 11.
Okay, it's grade eight, step four.
Alright. You want my glasses?
We're just flexing this kid.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight, discuss to take action to hire Katie Randall as a full-time dispatcher, position is funded and will fill a current vacancy.
So moved.
Second. Oftentimes, we get a, some kind of documentation about an incoming employee.
Do you need this?
Oh. Thank you. Okay, I guess that's fine.
Alright. This one? Yeah. I'm good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine, discuss to take action to approve a special appropriation from the tax collector in the amount of $4,000 to fund prior year refunds.
So moved.
Second.
Tom, you want to discuss this, tell us about this, no?
It's just, um, prior year refunds major, the majority of them are from leasing companies who wait till the last minute to, you know, provide the documentation to get their bills adjusted. And then since they paid for their bills ahead of time, that now forces us to give the refund.
And we have a list of those type of things that totally, something on there, we'll see. Okay, so $4,000, any discussion about that?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10, tax payments and refunds in the amount of $8,500, $84.30?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 11, discuss town planning processes including the incorporation of a master plan. So Al, you had brought this up, wanted to start the conversation.
Yeah, um, Tom, we, we're a planning board of selectmen, we have three separate processes in motion at the present time. We, the selectmen, are developing a town strategic plan. We set in motion, along with our fellow boards, the school facilities planning activity.
The tri-board you're talking about?
The tri-board, yeah. And the third one is of course, the academy initiative which we've set in motion. And, um, Tom, I thought it would be good to update ourselves on where we are with these three and then sort of ask ourselves the question, how do we, the selectmen, coordinate and integrate the findings of these three things? And then I think the third piece of that is looking down the road is, what's our referenda strategy? At points in the future to actually implement some of these things. So I saw this discussion this morning, it's just a conversation amongst the selectmen as to where are we at the moment, where are we headed, how are we going to make it happen?
Okay, so I think one of the things we want to talk about first is strategic plan. Because we've, we've submitted some draft comments and we need to follow that up as another meeting.
We need a workshop or something that we're talking about, right?
So rather than try to do this when Bruce isn't here, we'll, I'll have Lauren get in touch with everybody, see when we get a date to do that. And I think in that conversation, we can probably incorporate the other two issues that you're talking about because I think that's where it's appropriate. The academy situation, we all pretty much know is moving along, you know, they seem to be making good progress.
On the strategic plan one, I'm wondering, so let's just presume that we have this workshop and we get to a point where we're kind of comfortable with the wording and because some of that's just the nuances of the editing that we got to get done. And I think we all had some pretty good challenges and questions and feedback and all that. But I guess I'm thinking about now cascading it from a more of a communication standpoint. So what's the, what's the strategy for talking to the Board of Finance or the Board of Education and getting their buy-in, their commitment to the strategic plan? I guess I, I'm slightly feeling like when we went through the process, you know, we were certainly a part of the, you know, an active part of the conversation. But I don't think the other boards were as active and I kind of feel like we need to have a, we need to have a plan.
Yeah.
Right, to get it out there, get their support.
Yeah.
So it's a living and breathing document.
I agree, I think we need to talk with the Chair of the Board of Finance to kind of bring them into the process more than they have been, you know. Board of Ed has been participating, but I think we really need to get the Board of Finance more involved.
Good.
Alright, so we can, we can do that. We'll, we'll schedule our next meeting for the draft sooner rather than later. I don't know if we can get to it this week and I'm on vacation next week.
Nice.
So, but if we can this week, try.
You can do it the 25th, you originally had a budget workshop at 6 o'clock that got canceled. So I mean, you were all planning on being here for 6 o'clock anyways if we wanted to do it on the 25th before your regular meeting.
What do you think?
I'll float that out to Bruce too.
Okay, great.
And I'll send it to you guys.
That'd probably be best, yeah.
Goes Bruce, Bruce the acting person left in the sweep?
He is.
Tom, it's interesting, a sort of an informal coordinating mechanism developed between the tri-board group and the academy group. The two chairs started to meet informally.
Yeah, that's great.
Because they realized that there are certain items the public has asked to build into one plan or the other. And the two committees are trying to figure out, for example, I don't want to get too specific, if the public has asked that a certain thing be built in. The question became, well, should we try to build it in the academy building proposal or should we say that that belongs in a future school building? And so they've been, started to do a little coordinating. They asked, both of those chairs asked, what would we, the selectmen, be doing once we have both of these reports? Are we going to try to coordinate any of the facilities wish lists?
I think if we, if we look at the wish lists and the facilities that are available to satisfy those wish lists, we're looking at the possibility of a lot of duplication between the libraries, community spaces coming on, that'll be coming on. Between the schools, you know, saying that they've got community space, between the senior center, that's still.
Absolutely right.
Know what I mean, so, so you're right, it's going to be up to us to kind of reconcile that whole thing when we see it.
And steer it, I think we ought to steer it, yeah.
Well, I think they were looking for that kind of guidance that, you know, that we, the selectmen, are going to take that responsibility of avoiding duplication of trying to think logically, this particular activity actually would be better in this location as opposed to that location. Because both committees are hearing the same, not the same, there's a lot of overlap in the wish list.
Sure.
That the public has presented to the tri-board group and to the academy group.
I think as they, as they kind of hone in on what a community center is, hopefully that'll become a part of us too. That, you know, where things should be and what makes sense.
Are we thinking, are we going to have them in for sort of, you know, a midpoint update and then maybe an endpoint update? I'm just trying to think, like, you know, they're, they're going through their planning process right now, but ideally it would be great to sort of, and we can certainly go to their meetings as well. But it'd be great to have them kind of come and.
I think we can do that to public hearings too, we've got a lot of public hearings scheduled, so.
We will hear from them.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Let me just review the timelines to answer that, the academy committee, we gave them a cruel taskmaster. Bill Stabler is just driving that group. They, they believe they will be, meet the timeline and they're, you know, they're driving to do it.
San's the funding that you just talked about.
Yeah.
You said, right, they're not going to get to the funding piece?
Yeah, yeah, they didn't see it in their charge and I thought it was, it's not, it's not important, they're not getting to that piece. They don't have the resources or the time to do it. The tri-board group has an equally cruel taskmaster as chairman. And they, that group expects to be done about April 1st and have a report to the selectmen.
So the stars are sort of lining up, that's, that's good.
Yeah, so these reports are both going to be hitting our desk pretty soon and and perhaps then we should talk about the next steps with the tri-board report. As I understand, Tom, that has to first go through the Board of Ed before it comes to the selectmen or the Board of Finance.
Because they're the sponsoring body, is that why?
Well, yeah, the tri-board is really the Board of Ed, it's a Board of Ed budget or a capital budget. But, you know, the other two boards are trying to jump.
Or support.
The report from the tri-board group will be in the form of a series of selected options. We've started out with this many options and we're funneling it down. And I think the final number is going to be between, I don't know, two and four options. So that then goes to the Board of Ed before it comes to us. Then on the academy, that report comes to us, Tom, and then I think we have to figure out what are the next steps. You know, it's, it's now April, yeah, April 1st, April 8th, and then what are we going to do with it at that point? And.
They'll do a final readout with us of that or on or around that date or is that in the public hearing?
What you talking about?
The academy.
They're going to do a final readout with us, yeah.
Okay.
But, but, but this is not going to be like a surprise at the end.
No, no, no.
You know, I mean, with the public hearings and the stuff that's going on, we're going to be pretty well apprised of how things are moving along, so.
Well, the house there, most of the time, so.
Yeah, so they'll present their final, and their report is going to be in the form of, here are the types of activities which seem to fit into this building. And here's the architect and Collier's estimate as to what it costs to renovate that building to accommodate these types of activities. It's not going to be a room by room assignment, it's going to be, well, this part of the building could be used for daytime adult arts and education. And that part of the building is, that might be great for teenagers. So that's the form of the recommendation. That's what the architect and Collier's needs to price it out. And so the committee has to get its work done really.
Aggressively.
In the next week so that the architect and Collier's has enough time to do that. The public will receive perhaps a few simple visual documents from the architect as to what a few things might look like. It's not formal renderings, but they'll hopefully be enough to give people some imagery in their head. And then that comes to us and then the academy group keeps asking me, then what happens? After we've looked at it, then what happens? We had a previous discussion here at the selectmen level, Tom, that was inconclusive about what happens next in terms of referenda or how many and when. And I, I think we, the selectmen, are going to have to come to some conclusion.
Yeah, we are.
Especially if we're talking about doing something for May 11th.
When do we have to make that decision by?
To put it on the referendum Friday?
Yeah.
At your equally meaning as you're absolutely glad.
Drop dead.
Yes.
To define a question if we're going to do that.
You have to give the language in its final turn to the red stars after your meeting on April 8th.
So we have a few weeks to figure this out, but not a whole lot of time. And, Tom, last time we had an inconclusive discussion about what happens next. Because we're a little short in numbers, I don't know whether you want to proceed this morning?
I don't think, I don't think we can have a conclusive discussion right now anyway, only because we're still waiting for some developments that we need to, you know, analyze and take, and take a look at. So I think as this whole process percolates that we're going to be able to, it's going to become obvious to us as, as we get closer. But we just need to just hear what's going on.
What if the tri-board, what if the academy group comes back and says, you know, listen, we're not, we're not done yet, what do we do? In that case?
Tri-board will be done.
Tri-board, that was emphatic by the way, that was great.
And the academy's telling us they're going to be done, so, you know, I mean, I think we just need to count.
I'm not trying to put, you know, solve the minds by any chance, but.
I, I think academy will be done, done to the extent that I just described.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It may not satisfy everybody, but I think they'll.
You think that's?
But I, I think we'll have a working document and we'll have a number which is probably not very dissimilar from the number we've already had. And then the question is procedurally, Tom, what are we, the selectmen, going to set out to do with that? In terms of one referendum, two referendum, what kind of question to ask? I think that's where we, it's not clear to me what's next.
Yeah, well, I think what's next is that we have to come up with what we want the referendum question to be, given that we want to do this in there. And it's going to be based on what they tell us, you know, where they're heading, I mean, I, we have to, I believe in the referendum question, we have to ask, we have to give some facts, including what the proposed renovation cost, what's proposed operating cost would be. So that people can make a decision based on, an economic decision as opposed to, you know, a more cut decision.
Tom, I tell you, your head is still at, we need two referendum for this.
Yeah.
Okay, and I guess our discussion was inconclusive last time because I'm not yet persuaded we need to.
Yeah.
And I think we're going to have to have a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have we had town councils input on just sort of the pluses or minuses or can we or should we or do we know what, what?
That's a good question, I will, I'll talk to them and we'll get their input.
So we sort of buck in with our eyes open at least.
Right, right.
I'm also hearing rumblings from the Board of Finance that they are not supportive of, no, they haven't taken any votes yet, but that they are not supportive of a referendum without the bonding. I don't know if you've heard the same thing, but does that concern us?
No, I don't, I mean, I, I think that's putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
So, you know, we need to.
But do we need that be in alignment with the Board of Finance, I guess, I don't know.
Is that possible?
Good question.
Do we have, where is the funding for the Collier's stamp right now, the $10,000?
You know, we have to do.
Oh, because they, they turned it down, right?
Right, well, they tabled it.
They tabled it, so we have to do, I've spoken with Jean, we're going to do a line item transfer to cover it and then go do.
Out of our contingent, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
They're anticipating that.
Well, I guess, Tom, from my standpoint, this two referendum model that you have in mind, I still have to be persuaded that there's, there's some good reason why we are erecting an extra hurdle for this project that we've never applied in the past. Our tradition has been one referendum and for some reason, even though we have a strong signal from the public about bringing this to referendum, for some reason, we're, you know, your idea is we need this extra step and I call it a hurdle. And I guess when we're all assembled and we have the information in front of us, that's what I need to hear about, why is this one different than any others?
Sure, that's true. I mean, the biggest reason for me is that a lot of people are asking for a referendum to decide this.
I think people want a definitive referendum, a binding referendum.
They want decision made.
This is not binding.
Yeah.
If, if it's a no vote, it appears to be binding, but if it's a yes vote, it's not binding, we have to go to, do it again.
Well, I think the yes vote would be to appropriate money for design.
I think what this committee is delivering is, Tom, is 95% of the way towards the final design. There's not much left to do.
Okay, we have to hear that from them because I, I don't, I don't agree with that, I think what, what they're delivering us is concept. And then if we want to.
Like pre-design here almost, I think.
Yeah, and so if we, if we want to get to a, the design, it's going to cost a lot more money than $10,000. I mean, what, what they were talking about before with the Center Brook Architects was $200,000 for that design. So I think.
Like a double click, double click into the design, so they're basically giving you a straw man and then working out?
Yeah, because, because, you know, this is a thumbnail sketch. If, if this passes and we've got to go forward, then we've got to come up with a better design, like, you know, a more thorough design so that we have better numbers. Because that, that's the number that's going to be bonded. And if we don't, you know, if, if this, if this comes up to be 14 million, whatever it is. And then we, then we go to design and they say, well, you know what, in designing this and, you know, coming up.
It's 25 million.
Well, I mean, that's what people need to know, you know, otherwise it looks like a bait and switch.
That's kind of what happened.
We've told them one thing and then, you know, and now we're telling them, oh, well, after we've looked at it, it's actually going to be a lot more.
I would hope that, I hope this process would ferret that out though, now. Because they're in that, they're in that detail, they're working directly with the architect too, so one would hope that's.
Well, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, hopefully the architects will build in, since it is a little bit, I guess I'd say fuzzy. You know, they're going to have to build in some contingencies for the actual design, I mean, it's, it's difficult.
And again. Until, until we see what they have come up with, you know, are, do we know or do we feel that it's representative of what the community center would be? Or is it just, you know, a thumbnail sketch and we need to actually come up with the number and the reality of it? Do we need, you know, to spend a lot more money to get to that point?
And maybe some of that's guidance we need to get from Collier's and others about, you know, is this a concept design, is this a full-blown out design?
Right.
You know, is it a detailed design, I don't know where we end. You know, I'm in the, I'm in the weeds with the library building committee, I've seen, sort of seen the detailed design process work out. And, I mean, there's, there's two very different processes there, so.
The library is an example of how we've traditionally done these things.
Yes, yes.
The design-build committee is activated after a referendum.
Correct.
And, Tom, there are historians in town that can go back further than my memory, but it seems to me that the last 30 years, we've used a one referendum model. As far as I can remember and then so I.
I think because, I think because this issue has hung around for 14 years or 15 years, I think this isn't going to follow any of the old models. I think, you know, people are in some cases fed up, in some cases excited. And I'm trying to address the greater group and listen to what people are saying and they're saying to me, I really want to, I want a shot at, I want a shot at, you know, fully on this.
Well, I.
Or, or, or are they saying, I just want to see something happen? I mean, is, is the indication from getting this committee together and starting to see some action happen in the design process, getting some of that in the papers and, you know, progress being made, is that, is that also perceived as action? I don't know, I mean, you're talking to more people than I am, probably, so. I would think that that's.
Well, I think.
It's all the encouragement.
I think a lot of people are, you know, are just eager to see something happen.
Yeah.
They're on the side of the community center or some other, you, I mean, I, I think if you polled, if you polled everybody, they, you know, they have different opinions as far as what the academy should be. But the one opinion they would share is something has to happen. So I think, you know, I, I, you know, I agree with Tom, we can't let this sit, we can't let this sit and wait for.
Five more years.
You know, for, for the schools, I think it's got to be part of it, I believe, but I just don't think we can just let it stagnate, I think we need to have a direction.
But let me pose, let me pose a hypothetical to you guys, so what if, what if this committee, the academy committee, comes back with, you know, hey, we need, we need three more months to, to really nail down a design and have a cost that is detailed enough that the voters could comfortably vote. Well, I'll just play it out.
I know.
What if?
We could, we could come up with a lot of whatevs.
Yeah?
You know, I mean, I think what we need to do is let the process go forward, let it continue.
And see what they come up with.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't want to try to figure out every contingency ahead of time when we're going to end up with what we're going to end up with.
Sure.
So we'll continue this discussion, I guess, on or about April 1st?
Yeah, well, before that.
April 8th, we got to decide, it sounds like, so that's.
No, we'll, we'll be talking about it at the public hearings and at our meetings.
Do we have a role in those public hearings or is it more presentation of the committee to us or to the public? Like what is our role in those meetings?
Well, we have one or two public input sessions ahead of us in which we and the committee are just listening to the public. And then as we get towards the April 1st date, I think they'll have some things. And then, as we get towards the April 1st date, I think they'll have some things to show the public to, the public can react to.
But we're, our role is the board of selectmen, we don't have, do we have a role in that?
Just as moderators, you know, listening. Look, I think we heard some interesting things at the first public hearing, you know. It went in a couple of different directions, and I think it was, I think that was healthy to have that conversation.
Yeah.
So let's, let's continue to play out and see what happens.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, number 12, citizens' comments.
Hi, Rosfady Bishop Lane. I'm just a citizen of Madison, but I'm confused. Why would we be asking the question, do we want a community center or not, during a budget referendum, when 56% of the people that we paid $16,000 to do a great survey, 2,400 people actually said, well, within the survey, there were 2,400 people, 56% of those people said they want a community center. If you look at the last three to four years of our budget referendum turnout, it's been 1,100, 1,300, so 56% of the 2,400 actually comes out more than what has turned out for a budget referendum. What I'm hearing is, is most people want to know, why can't we just have it go to bonding? Because we already have the stats. We've already had Collier's tell us how much it would cost. So what I'm saying is, is we don't need to have another question asked, do we want a community center? Thank you.
Anyone else, liaison reports, selectmen comments.
I have one. So I was at the demolition of the hull building last week. So the hull building, as many of you have seen, there's a big hole in the ground at this point. Cover of the newspaper was the picture of the last bricks coming down from the hull building. And they're going to start forming the foundation of the new library this week. So progress is really going to start happening pretty quick. The old post office, which is the white building behind, has actually been turned. It was up, it's up on footings, and it's actually been put in its final resting place and will be lowered next week. And then we have our official groundbreaking on March 25th at 4:00 PM. So we'll have these in town hall available to come to see the shovels in the ground officially, but pretty exciting stuff, so that is my liaison.
I've already reported on my committee.
Yes, you did.
Okay. That being said, I'll ask for adjournment.
Awesome, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for calling in, Gene.
Yeah, thanks, Gene.
How you feeling?
Uh, okay.
In case anybody doesn't know, Gene broke her kneecap.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's why she's on the phone.
Yeah, and I might not see my face for a little bit.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I'll talk to you offline, not on camera. How you actually did that?
We've adjourned.